Okay, notice is hereby given of a regular meeting of the City of Friendswood Planning and Zoning Commission to be held Thursday, April 22nd, 2021, beginning at 7:00 PM in the council chambers at City Hall located at 910 South Friendswood Drive, Friendswood, Texas. The Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting is called to order. We will now receive any communication from the public or committee liaisons to the commission. To comply with provisions of the Open Meetings Act, the commission may not deliberate on subjects discussed under this agenda item. However, the commission may direct such subjects be placed on a later regular agenda item, excuse me, on a later regular commission agenda for discussion and/or possible action. Please note that public comments will be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person, and Commissioner Richard Sassen directly to my left will be the timekeeper. Out of respect to those speaking during the public comment period, please refrain from any outbursts or interjections to include but not limited to applause and/or disparaging noises from the audience, which disrupts the meeting and could discourage others from speaking. So as I said earlier, this will be the only time tonight for public comments. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak at this time? If you haven't, again, filled out the card, please do so. If, and I will go ahead and start in the, in the order that they were handed to me, I'll read out the names, and if you could, step to the podium, adjust the mics, and then state your name, please, just for, for the record. I've got, first is Cindy and Brian Fish.
And while you're coming up, just to let you know, like Commissioner Matranga said, five minutes, and we're a little challenged today. This is supposed to be red, so I wrote red on it, but it doesn't really look very red. It looks more pink. And this is, this is supposed to be yellow. So I'm going to show the yellow card when you have one minute left, and that's five minutes. I'll, I'll show what looks to be kind of red.
Thank you, and I doubt I have five minutes. But, hi, everyone. My name is Cindy Cawthon-Fish, and I've been living in my property, 98 Eldorado Drive, which is directly across the street for about seven years now. I've bought the property. It's very peaceful. We like the, the large yards or land that we live on, and there's one way in, one way out, and any more people in that neighborhood would be, would be a lot of traffic. Not to mention if we have two other houses on this property across from me, that's construction zone for at least two years. And that's going to be very disruptive to our little, you know, just very peaceful area. Another concern I have is I did not flood in Harvey, and it came up my driveway, but obviously in the, the house across the street did not flood either, but it was very, very soggy, so they will be building up. And when they build up, where's that water going to go? The people at the end, where the ditches end, all flooded down there. So all that water's going to run down. That's two more houses, that's two more places where the, it's going to be built up. So I have a concern about that, and I have a concern about it going up my driveway a little bit further and ruining my, my property. I think this opens the floodgates for people to come in and build a subdivision, and we are not a subdivision. So, and that being said, I think this is a bad idea, and we're more of a family-oriented little area with neighbors are very much together, but we're not on top of each other, and that's how we want to stay. So, thank you for your time.
No, thank you very much for your comments.
Hey, Joe, if I'm, if I might, can, can we get a clarification? You said across the street, but you didn't refer to the property. I'm assuming this is in relation to what's on the agenda tonight?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just want to clarify for the record.
No, that's fine.
Is that okay?
Well, you already did, so go.
Sorry.
The property's 99 Eldorado Drive, and I'm at 98 Eldorado Drive, so I actually stare right down the driveway and the front door of the property.
Thank you. Sorry, Joe.
Thank you.
Next is Robert Darling.
I was anticipating going a little later in the group. I'll just do this and spread the, spread the legs out a little bit. So I'm Robert. I live with my wife Stephanie.
Oh, and you can just point them up. They're, they're directional, so you're great. No, yeah, I don't want to force you to do that.
If you want, you can take your mask off either way.
It's up to you. It's your, we're far enough away with social distancing.
Robert Darling, I live at 31 Eldorado, and this is going to be with regards to the, the division of property at 99 Eldorado, and I echo Cindy's sentiments. It's a peaceful neighborhood. It's not what I would describe as a subdivision, but that was most of the point of everyone who has moved there. To say it's not a neighborhood would not be to say that we aren't neighbors, that it isn't a very tight-knit community. And so we try to stay out of, you know, one another's business, and there's freedom in that, and we enjoy that aspect of it. If we wanted to live in West Ranch, we would have lived in West Ranch. We like the property. We like having the space around. We like all of our neighbors having the opportunity to, you know, plant orchards and keep bees, not to call anyone out without it having to, you know, affect anyone. But splitting, splitting the property does open up the proverbial Pandora's Box. It causes, it calls for houses to be built, like basically right on top of one another, even though, you know, it's a two-acre lot, and you, yes, you split it down to, to one acre each, that's still relativistically speaking to the rest of Friendswood, it's still a sizable lot, but it's not oriented in a way that would really be conducive to supporting a house on each lot, especially if it's going to be in keeping with the rustic aesthetic of, of the neighborhood that we have so far. Also, I didn't, I don't think it was planned this way, but I think it's kind of funny that this hearing got placed on Earth Day, and here we are talking about subdividing a lot that, again, will further detract from the rustic aesthetic of the neighborhood. So whether or not there is recourse going forward on this, I still think that it's a bad idea and will definitely sour relations with whomever, whatever poor soul, like winds up moving into there through no fault of their own. It's just, you know, the entire neighborhood dislikes what it's, what, what's happened, and I don't think it's in the spirit of the neighbors what is being done to that property, because it's not my, I, I don't believe that they're even intending to live in the property that they're subdividing. They're just going to divide it and sell it off. So, thank you for your time and your consideration.
No, thank you very much for your comments. Good comments.
Just going to lower these because I'm substantially shorter than my husband. It's hard to go after him because obviously he's quite a wordsmith. I actually bought the property before I met my husband. I've lived at 31 Eldorado Drive since about 2016, and this is, of course, in regards to the subdivision at 99 Eldorado Drive. You know, we all have, you know, deep-rooted concerns regarding this because it's multifactorial. So many of us were told when purchasing our homes that there were deed restrictions in place that did not allow for subdivision of less than two acres of a property. You know, like most of us, we trusted our realtors and went on their word that indeed this was a neighborhood that we wanted. We did not want an HOA that's going to mandate what we can, can't do in terms of our residential design decide, decisions. If one of our neighbors wanted to have a sailboat in their yard, by golly, they sure could. But in terms of maintaining the property size, that was non-negotiable. And so we all just kind of went blindly into this, bought our homes, loved our homesteads. You know, like he said, grew orchards, you know, have bees, have livestock. Some of us have nonprofits on our property. And so the, the spirit of our neighborhood is very much so of many ranches, many farms. And we have someone that has come in and purchased a property in a devastating situation where he just wanted quick money, sold to someone in our own community that is looking to turn a quick profit, has listed the property in har, has received multiple cash offers at asking value in order for us to actually keep the home as it is with a single lot, but for some reason, this former mayor has said no every time. I'm sorry, it's a full price offer, but no, we're subdividing lots. And us as homeowners, we're all coming together, and we're just scratching our heads, going like, what's, why? You know, we're giving you what you're asking for. It's double what you paid for it. Please just let us keep our neighborhood the way we love it. You know, Bob and I have four children, and our oldest is nine, and, you know, it's not the, not the, the times that we grew up in where we're walking the fence line, you know, good neighbor fences to our friends' houses. Hey, is, you know, is Jennifer home? Can I come and play? You know, it's, we're more protective. You know, my, my nine-year-old, she has to take her cellphone because I have to see where she is at all times. She wants to do the loop on our street, and I literally watch because it's a different time. And I want to make sure that my children, all four of them, can have that same freedom. That is why we purchased out there. We purchased because it's rural, because I know my neighbors, I love my neighbors, I trust my neighbors. It's, it's not West Ranch. I lived in West Ranch. It's a beautiful neighborhood. But ultimately, I want the childhood that my children had hanging from trees and, you know, catching lizards and, you know, growing butterflies in our backyard. Unfortunately, our, our one caterpillar died, but, you know, we're trying, and we have that ability on our beautiful land, and someone's coming in and trying to turn our beautiful neighborhood into something that it's not intended for. And so I understand that there were deed restrictions that were set in place in 1969, and, you know, there's some question, I guess they expired 25 years later, but we did speak with a real estate attorney, Rosemary Jackson, and she said that there, there may be some issues at play that we may be able to reinstate, and if we have enough people who actually want to, to go forward with this. So we're begging, we're, we're on our knees, asking, please postpone this and see if we can clear up these, these issues that maybe are still in play. Again, we're, we're, we're willing to, to buy this property from them, but we don't understand why they want to subdivide. You know, we're asking to pay it for the price that they're, they're willing to, to list. So, again, we please ask you to reconsider this. Thank you.
No, thank you. Steve Hobbs. Good evening, sir.
Appreciate the committee taking comments from the residents. That's awful thoughtful of you. I'm here in regards to the subdivision of the lot at 99 Eldorado. I've been a resident of this community for 23 years. It never crossed my mind when I bought the property that anybody would ever come in and try to do this. After talking to the neighbors living there for all these years, everybody was in the same mindset that this was an estate community, large lots, and that's the way it would stay. We understand the subdivision ordinance has expired many years ago, but we're pleading with this commission to take a second look at this. It's unfortunate the way this has come down because I would say that the, the purchaser or the owner, the current owner, will not be a resident of this neighborhood, which is unfortunate, because this is why we moved here, is because we want these large lots. So I'm just here to voice my objection to this and ask the committee to take a second reconsideration on this, this matter. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Next is Dale Dunn. Good evening, Mr. Dunn.
Perhaps I am the only one that originally bought the property from Paul O'Farrell, one of our former mayors. At the time, it was listed as Eldorado Estates, and I think by the county, it still has that nomenclature on it. And, and we were out looking one Sunday afternoon for a, a place to raise our kids. At the time, we had six kids, and, and so we wanted a lot, a lot of area. And so we stopped at Paul O'Farrell's house and talked to him about buying property. And he was generous to us and allowed us to, to pay him for the property, and he would carry the note. And so I was all for that. This was great. He was a country guy, and we wanted to fit in. So, so we did that. I guess what I ought to say also is I, I echo the sentiments that have already been They're really, really valid. I guess one of my, my biggest concerns is, while this was, is planned on being subdivided so that there can be some significant monies made, I think it devalues the value of the rest of our properties. Most of us, as you've heard, have no intention of making our lots any smaller. We love the size that we have and want to keep it that way. And even though I have heard that this is a done deal, I would like still to be able to, to explore our options as to what we can do to maintain the neighborhood as it is. And that's all I have at the present time, and I appreciate your time.
John Maynard.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Don't have a lot of comments. I wasn't really planning to speak, but I did want to show my support for our neighbors. I, I live at 72 Eldorado, and I'm talking obviously about the property at 99 Eldorado. My wife has lived in this, this Eldorado Estate since 1986, I think. We are long-term residents of the area, and we, we moved there really. She moved there, and, and I love the place because of the, of the space that we have. When you're, when you're, when you're on two-acre lots, you're, you're friendly with your neighbors, but you're also, it's a live-and-let-live community that, and you really lose that when you start bunching people more together. I think that this subdivision really isn't in keeping with the character of our community. It's going to impact maybe our, maybe our home values, but, and also is it, is it the first in a, in a series of, of things that could happen to our community? So, you know, whether or not our, our homeowners, our homeowners restrictions that have expired, if we can find a way to put those back, I mean, some of us are talking about that. But in the meantime, I'd like to ask you your consideration in delaying implementation of the decision that's been made and possible reconsideration of the decisions that have been made, so that we can, we can make sure that people that actually live in the community, not just people that want us to make some money by, by jumping in, dividing, and leaving, people that live there their whole lives, and are going to probably, probably pass away in this community, right? People that love this place, the people that are impacted by it, you know, have our, have our, our concerns shared with you, and, and, and it's something that, that, this important, important to everybody in that, in that subdivision is, is made with eyes wide open and, and, and done the right way. It's just, it doesn't seem like the right thing to divide it. If that's already been decided, I'd like for your reconsideration and, or delay in implementation of that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Those were all the cards that I received, but I would like to give an opportunity to anybody that has something they'd like to say to, to please step forward at this time. Okay, we've seen, seen no further comments. Again, thank you, everybody that spoke, and for everybody else that, that came tonight for this subject. We appreciate your attendance tonight. Okay, next is our consent agenda. These items are considered routine or ministerial in nature and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of items unless a commissioner so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. On the matter of the golden final plat, I so move that we reconsider it separately. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? And I can't see Travis.
Okay.
There you go.
Ah, there you go. So I show that to be unanimous. I then make a motion to approve the golden final plat. Is there a second?
Do we need to do them in order?
Well, we voted on the, the motion to pull it out.
Oh, to pull just that one out, I'm sorry. My mistake.
I think I can just go directly to it since we're, it's.
A second.
Aubrey, is, would you please give us a staff summary of the ones available of this matter?
Yes, sir. I think a few people have alluded to, this is a two-acre lot that's being subdivided into two, one-acre lots. It is an open-ditch subdivision, so the minimum lot width is 120 feet, and the subdivision, as, as far as the two lots, does meet all the criteria in the City of Friendswood zoning ordinance.
Okay, I, I made the motion, and I'm going to ask a question or two, and then I, I'm going to reserve my right to come back at the end and follow up. I wanted to, wanted just to make sure that what I heard, some, some of the comments this evening, that they're adding, or they're subdividing the lot from two acres to one acres, I get that, but I heard tonight that adding two houses, but I also heard there was an existing driveway there. I believe there's one house already there. I mean, just, just for clarity, I did drive out there. I did, I've been out there several times, but there is a, a house that's existing there, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And I guess one of the, the key things is I want to make sure that I understand, as I understand the rules in general, that if the applicant has met all the requirements of the City of Friendswood, there is no legal standing for us to, to deny that application of this subdivision. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. And I think the, the state, as you all know, last year and, or two years ago in their legislative session, they changed our subdivision ordinance rules to where if we deny a plat or a plan, we have to provide specific reasons and conditions that they are violating, and we have to provide those in writing and give them a chance to, you know, address any of those and then consider their reapplication. But at this point, we don't have any item, you know, any outstanding items that they're not meeting. So it's a ministerial duty of the commission to approve the plat.
And I guess I have one follow-up, and it's, I just want to make sure I understand, and Mary Kay, you may need to opine upon this one more so if you can, and that is that I heard a lot about the deed restrictions that were in place that expired, is what I heard from, from the public this evening. Again, since they're expired, I'm just double-checking that they played no part in developing this particular subdivision, because you came to the same conclusion that they were no longer valid instruments.
Right, and deed restrictions are separate than zoning ordinances, and because they're in compliance with all of our ordinances, state law mandates approval.
Okay. I, I just wanted to make sure I, I understood that. Mr., oh, wait, Dick, you second. Oh, somebody in here. Okay, Rip, Mr. Sassen, you seconded the motion to approve.
Yeah, yeah, thanks for the summary, and, and from what I, I'm hearing, we really have no recourse other than to, to approve this particular one. But just for my edification, if the homeowners wanted to prevent further splitting of, of lots in their neighborhood, what would be the right approach to, to do that? I mean, it's not a city approach, because I, I don't think we, the city gets involved in forbidding different areas, in different people from splitting up their land.
Yeah. I, so I would encourage them to reach out to a real estate attorney and see what they can do to get their deed restrictions reinstated. So they could do that. The other option, as far as our, the city's zoning ordinance is, we do have the SFRE zoning district that is minimum two acres, but each individual property owner will be responsible for submitting an application to change the zoning on their property.
So that's single-family residential estate?
Uh-huh. Yeah.
Okay, so, so they could rezone, each individual homeowner could rezone each of the properties. But from what I can tell, they're trying to keep someone who wants to split from doing it, and that person probably wouldn't rezone, so it makes that difficult.
Yeah, unfortunately, it wouldn't remedy this situation, but in the future, if the other, you know, 99% of the property owners agreed to change their zoning, you know, they could change the whole, you know, if everybody participated, the whole neighborhood could, in essence, be changed to SFRE zoning with the zone change application.
Thank, thank you for that. That's all I have.
Any, any of the other commissioners have questions, something we'd like to discuss?
So would it violate our ministerial duty to table it for two weeks?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks.
Before I forget, I can't see Travis, because our commissioner is attending remotely. Y'all can see that I can't. Travis, any, any questions or comments from you?
Commissioner Clark asked exactly what I was going to ask, so nothing else.
Okay. Any other?
I typically would have gone back and, and looked at this if it wasn't on the consent agenda, but when did, when did we approve this the first time? Sorry to put you guys on the spot.
It's just a short form final plat, so this is the first time you've seen it.
Okay. But because of the nature of its compliance, it shows up where it is.
Yeah, less than four lots.
Yeah, okay. Thanks.
Commissioner Lundquistine.
So I personally live in a neighborhood with two to five acres, so I absolutely know where you're coming from. Are we in violation of our duty not to? Okay, I see.
Any other?
It's certainly a cautionary tale for my neighborhood too, because I believe it could happen in my neighborhood.
Anything else from anybody else? I just want to say, I, I heard and I listened to all your comments, and believe me, as I've thought about this, I've had very similar comments. I, I don't obviously live in your neighborhood, but I always try to put myself in that spot of, if I was living in your neighborhood, how would I feel about this? And you moved out there, I, I quite understand for a reason, and you live out, continue to live out there for a reason. I don't know, and I'm, I can't opine as to whether adding one more house out there will, will drastically change, but I, I heard you tonight that, that you feel that it will. I hope you heard, though, as well, is we have a legal obligation, they've met all the requirements that are in place, and that we have an obligation to approve this because they've met all the ordinances, and we're required by the state to, to approve this. We really don't have a choice in this matter, even as we spoke tabling it, doesn't do anything, it just, it just kicks the can down the road a little bit. But we, the applicant has made a proper application, they've filled out all the paperwork, it's met all the requirements, and so we really don't have a choice to do anything but to approve this. But I, I did hear you, and I, and I do understand and try to put myself in your spot as best as I can. So with that, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? It shows to be unanimous.
Can I ask a question?
No, sir. I'd be, I'd be glad to talk to you at the end of the meeting, sir. To complete our consent agenda topics, is there a motion to approve the minutes for the Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting held Thursday, April 8th, 2021?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Shows to be unanimous. Next is a discussion item, specifically it is to the discussion and update on Friendswood Future Land Use Map. Aubrey?
Yes, sir. So we, the subcommittee has met again, a couple of times again, and we continue to work on the future land use map. We did meet with CEDC a couple of times. They did give us our bless, their blessing on April 7th. They caught a couple of little things for us, so Marcus is going to go through the changes that we've made since the last time we presented to you, just to bring you up to speed on the current state of the future land use map.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, and it's already pulled up. So what I did to make the conversation a little bit more efficient was, what you'll see is track changes, so to speak, so I highlighted and read where we changed. So we presented in February, we went off and talked to CDC as well as... So we presented in February. We went off and talked to CDC as well as looked at this a couple of times in subcommittee because and in some of these cases, one thing led to another, it kind of dominoed on us. So we went from eight, 11 major changes to 18. There is one on the agenda tonight that I want to make sure that at least get your gears turning, that if you have feedback for the subcommittee to give that to us because we'll be talking about it as it goes forward. So from this slide, you can see it's a little misleading on item number six. We had two agenda items that we wanted to talk to you about last time. That was separated out into change 16. On the next slide, it shows all of these. Okay, so I know it's hard to read, but it's in our backup material. So you can see 12 through 18 is what we added. I put an asterisk on this table to, to make sure you guys recognize what we've had discussion with this larger forum on. Obviously, in the subcommittee, we've talked about all of these. So that's just for historical information here so we can, I'll keep track of things. I'll pause in case you have questions. Otherwise, I'll proceed. Okay, so we can go down. I also, so in the top right, you can see those red stars, the asterisk there. That's where we've had this full commission weigh in. So we can go down, I believe to, let's see, so number 12, so that'll be slide 14? Okay, so Timber Creek, Timber Creek Golf Course. So when we started looking at this in our future land use map, it was zoned as parks. Our, our open space, which one was it? Or is that the same thing?
The previous land use map had parks, open space and public property all in one category.
Yeah, so that was something that we had identified going into our meeting with CEDC. They pushed on it as well. So as a result of those conversations, we changed it from open space to industrial, as you'll see. So these, these call out boxes that are in blue here are the same cut and paste from the table that we had in backup charts. Anything that I added above and beyond, I made sure I put it in red in case Aubrey wanted to correct me, but this future land use map, the two on the right hand side aligns to what it's currently zoned as. So I know that causes confusion from time to time with people who look at this.
This is one of the things that CEDC pointed out to us and I, it got changed over to parks just because it was open space on the old future land use map. But one of the things that we've tried to keep in the back of our mind is this is the future land use map. So if the current, you know, whatever's on that property right now was to go away, what would we want to go there? So that whole panhandle out there is industrial and so we felt that that was probably the best, you know, highest and best use for that property. But that's one of the things we just keep repeating. Like if that went away, you know, what would we want there? So.
I guess this is our informal discussion period, so I guess we can jump, jump in a little bit or if you want to just kind of work through.
Yeah, no, please do.
Okay, so I just wanted to check. So CEDC recommended this as well? Okay. And I understand where you're going and why you're going there. So I think I'm, I'm, I'm on board with you as well. It just, I, I wouldn't hate to change a golf course to an industrial, to a refinery, but, but I, I, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, it sounds awkward, but.
Yeah.
With it labeled as parkland, it was throwing our park calculation way off because it's like 315 acres.
Yeah.
You know, so we definitely had to get it out of the parks category.
When we dug into this, there is quite a bit of complexity for development here anyway, right? So.
From flooding and oil wells and.
Right. Okay.
And it is, sorry, it is just the blue part on the left is the actual golf course. Everything else we had already changed from the special study nonresidential area to industrial. And so this is just clarifying that all of that is going to be industrial.
With a retail along 20 through 51.
Yes.
Okay, so, next slide please. For number 13, the Wickham property. So really, this is really alignment to the PUD. So we noted what was there. So the whole right side of that development is going to be, or is in the ordinance, zoned for commercial, or retail actually. So that's what we, that's what we did. So that was something that we had overlooked in the first revision, so this is a bit of catch up.
I'm glad, I'm glad you did this. This is exactly where we want to be on this, this property.
And we did have this one labeled as mixed use when we updated to the current map. But there's not a residential component in that that was approved as part of the PUD and it's, the residential part's been disapproved several times by council.
Right.
So, and none of this is set in stone. I mean, it's going to be a fluid map and so, you know, if we get compelling reasons to do something different, then in the future, we'll be sure to include an amendment to the future land use map with the zone change so that we keep them.
This property has gotten a lot of clarity from what city council wants and, and so we should be in line with that.
Yeah.
I agree with that.
Okay. So here on the bottom end of Friendswood, Lake Friendswood, you can see there. So this is just an, in, to make it align to the rest of what we put it on future land use map, so. So it doesn't say what we changed it to, but we changed it to parks, right?
Yeah, parks, parkland.
Oh, it does. I missed it. It says it in there.
That makes sense.
Okay. So 15, so this, and we've had this in front of our commission as in the last year or so. So this is just south of HEB. So we've got that piece of property there that was considered as a zone change in the past. So when we looked at it again, we thought that might be a good opportunity for us to go ahead and list it as retail. To become compliant with the other guiding principles that we've used when we apply changes to this map. So 50,000 people, 80, 20, when we're looking and Aubrey can go through some of those statistics that helped us get to this point, but that was the rationale here. Okay? All right. So 16, so this is a bit of cleanup from the last time. So we had talked about, so this was a, a special interest area. So there was quite a bit of change in all of this area. So we specifically looked at from the action last time and the discussion here, planning and zoning, so.
And this is the property out towards Alvin off of 528?
Right, this is north, northeast of the Georgetown development. Okay. So when we looked at that, it was currently zoned as industrial, but with no buffer to the residents or what was zoned as residential in that area. We thought there was a, at, at least some consideration that needed to be made. So this is what we chose to change it to. The front was already business park. Is that correct? So really, we just continued that business park all the way through to the rear of the property. Okay?
Which one of the reasons for that, business park actually has 25 foot setbacks on all sides of the property. So basically the building and development needs to be in the middle of the property. So we felt like that would give adjacent residential property a little more protection rather than industrial.
And I will note, any and all of these are open for discussion with developers, landowners, public forum, all of that is part of our plan going forward. So if anyone feels like we were short sighted or put the wrong type of classification on these, it's, it's up for debate. So we're not obviously shutting it down. So this is just our recommendation going forward. Okay, two more. So this one was something that had recently changed. So this is Klein. We know that the bond passed. So Klein will no longer exist at some point in the future. So when we took a look at it, it's zoned, it's already zoned. The future land use map as it currently sits has it as single family residential. So we changed it to make sure it aligned to, to that in the future land use map, since it's completely surrounded by neighborhoods there as well. Okay, so this is the one that we want to make sure that we get any input from the larger commission, not just the subcommittee. So obviously we've got our future roadways. So on the right hand side, you can see where the green extends. It might be better for you guys to pull up your larger view. So this is extending at the intersection that we have down there or will have down there. So on our future roadmap, as we were looking at this, obviously you guys know with the reds in, in a lot of these intersections and prime real estate areas, we've zoned the first 300 feet or, I don't want to say zoned, we've denoted in the future. Thank you. I can, I can feel her eyeballs looking at me when I said that. So this is what we're targeting these things for, but we noticed that on this part where the future road is going to be, that we didn't put anything retail in that area. So I guess, I guess that's, that's what we're doing is open the floor for debate to see if that's something that we want to consider going forward. So we did not make a decision here, so this is a future decision. So we can talk it now or you guys can give us our input later.
I'm just going to say, put it out there to see if it, if what I'm saying about how I'm thinking about this is how it actually is, but although I know League City, what they do is, is not relevant to what we do, but if you're coming from all the way from 45 on the, on the other side of this Friendswood Lakes Boulevard, it's, it's got mostly residential, but then there are pockets that are commercial, retail, daycares, that sort of thing.
Right.
If I remember that correctly. So are you thinking that this would be commercial all along its length within Friendswood or would it be pockets like they've done it?
That's, that's, that's the question we're asking. So that was the light bulb that went off for us is when we looked at it, it kind of stuck out as we didn't want to give the impression that we only want this to be buffered with, you know, concrete walls and, and residential areas. So she's annotating here.
Yeah, not very good, sorry.
So, but yeah, that's, that's part, that's the discussion we want to have.
So one thing, falling leaf is shown on our future, or on our major thoroughfare plan to be widened as well. And so there actually is kind of a natural intersection right there in a oval circle where one of the routes of the future Friendswood Lakes Boulevard or Friendswood Parkway would go. There's three, currently three possible routes. We don't have the right of way. And basically whoever starts developing in there is going to probably get the opportunity to, you know, start dedicating and determine where that roadway goes. But like I said, right now, we don't have the right of way. So it's just a plan or an idea at this point.
So anything we change on there would be purely conceptual?
Yeah.
So, so as I understand it, the, the green line, we do have the right of way for and the dotted lines, we don't? Is that?
No, the only right of way we have is my is over here up on 528. Let's see if I can make.
So coming off of 528, we have some right of way for a distance?
Yes, just I don't know what the exact distance is.
Okay.
But it goes between the two red properties in the corner.
Okay, I, I got you. So it's not very far and everything else is best guess at this point.
Yeah.
And eventually it would hook up with the Pearland and do they come to our border as well?
No.
No? So they have, they have their own issues to finish this out?
Yes. Yeah, it's on their future land use map as well, going south of the airport.
Right.
But they're not quite, they're to Dixie Farm Road.
So it's going to be difficult. If we chose to say, hey, we want retail or some type of commercial description along this route, but we don't have the route, we would, it would have to be fuzzy and, and maybe even some comments in there to kind of describe what we're trying to do in terms of the future plan.
Yeah, I didn't think about this until just now, but I mean, it, it's perfectly acceptable in my personal opinion to not do anything with it knowing that there's just too much up in the air and we can note it as a area of interest later.
Eventually we'll need to rewrite the chapter of land use in the comp plan that supports the map. And so we could address that in the, in the written part of the land use.
Yeah, I, I kind of like something in the map. I think there's a lot of people that just look at the map. And so, you know, even if it's just comments or something like that, I, I do support the idea that there'd be commercial or light and industrial or office along there and, and maybe that can be done with a note or something, but I think that's the goal. The goal is not to put residential along this, what will be a, you know, thoroughfare at some day going all the way from Pearland to, to 45.
But there is a lot of residential already that.
There is.
You know, they're, they have setbacks and they have landscaping.
Right.
But I think the majority of it is absolutely residential. That doesn't mean the other side has to be the same. It can change because if it, if it meets the needs of the city at the time and the developer, then you could make it retail or commercial.
But what I'm hearing is percentage wise, you know, there's a goal of what percent retail and, and residential a healthy community has. And, and we are below that. And so in terms of planning future, we should be trying to move it toward where our goal is, which I, correct me if I'm wrong, 2080, is that the, is that the number I heard about?
I'll talk a little bit about that here in just a minute.
Okay, sorry. I'm taking your thunder.
No, it's fine.
So we're, why this is such a precarious topic if, not that we make the wrong decision, obviously this is not set in stone, but this is, this is, this should be, this should help guide us when we're sitting and making decisions in the future. I don't want to look at this map and say, well, look, someone thought that all needed to be residential and here's a property owner who has the ability to do the best thing for their property. We know we struggle with those decisions all the time. Tonight was an example of that. So so it's an important piece to make sure we don't overlook.
But this one is just extremely hard because there's so much uncertainty at the route and
Yeah.
everything around it.
But let's pretend it's built or it's going to be built and we knew the exact route. I, I think the question is what would we want to see as terms of future plan? I, I think, you know, we go with the best information we have and, and, and update the plan. It'll be a while before we do another update and at that point, you know, probably more clarity will come in. But I think if we're thinking we want half or some percentage or, you know, all to be office or residential, we should reflect that. I think your question is, what do we want if we knew where it was?
If you have input for the subcommittee to consider, we want that input, yeah.
And, and my, my, my personal view is that we should be accessing toward a, a combination of, of retail and office along here. And in order, because it's one of the few places that we can actually get to where we think a healthy city is or where I've seen independently a healthy city is. And, and this is one of the few knobs we have to turn.
I think Travis is trying to jump in.
Yeah, I can see him.
I was just going to say, I, I just wanted to say, it's better if we drive the show a little bit here of what we want or what Friendswood wants based off of the comp plan. So by, we don't know if we want to do something right now, but getting that information from everybody here will help us drive at least what we want. And that, that makes us a little bit more proactive to the final outcome.
Especially because we're getting a lot of inquiries on some of this property out there. It's being looked at right now to be developed. So we need to bring it up now, sooner than later.
And all those are fair, those are all fair comments. And it's not that I'm opposed to showing a, like a commercial corridor on this, but I'm just thinking of the rest of the sides of this don't look like that. And if, but if that's what we need to do and in the best interest of Friendswood and its citizens, then maybe we rec, that's what we recommend is a commercial corridor, but also obviously subject to anybody coming in and developing that wants to do it differently. But I'm just thinking of all the, the West Ranch and even within Friendswood, it's, it's residential right up
But if you extend this back to a Pearland, there's quite a bit of commercial along it as you go through, through Pearland all the way to Beltway 8. And so it, it, it's a mix.
And you, and you're proposing, at least you're proposing to, to create a commercial corridor?
Yeah. That, that would be.
Aubrey's got a look on her face.
How, how do you do it without a route defined for the parkway?
Well, I, I think that this is a conceptual plan. And so what you somehow put into the wording of, of whatever we as a body think, you know, and not just me, obviously. But, you know, if, if we as a body think that this should be the source of retail, office or, or commercial, that we somehow delineate that in, in some way, both in the narrative and, and on the, on the map. And this might be a fuzzy area where you have a, a special description or something of that sort.
I think the, the challenge that we're going to have is with that route being undetermined at this time, any route that we choose through there is going to be very impactful to a lot of residential properties. And so I think maybe the intersection, similar to what's in West Ranch with, you know, four corners of commercial or something, you know, for a convenience store or, you know, gas station, daycare.
Grocery, yeah.
You know, for neighborhood services is, might be about the, you know, the extent of what we
So what would you consider, Aubrey, based on your study of, of the map, to be the major intersections in the future?
I would, the main one, like I said, falling leaf is called out to be expand, extended, expanded to a collector street, which would be an 80 foot right of way. And so that's the red line coming this way. And then, so wherever that intersects with the future parkway would be a natural intersection.
And so what you're suggesting, or at least throwing out for consideration is rather than showing the whole corridor along that route, proposed route, you would do the major intersections? And leave the rest as?
Just, like I said, it's the majority of the property through there is already, I mean, it already has houses built on it.
Right.
We've got the intersection at 528 and the future Boulevard. It's all red in the bottom right hand corner. We've got the intersection. Um, we've got the intersection at West Boulevard and the Parkway that has three corners and the school's gonna be on the other corner. Um, and that's pretty much all the Parkway that's gonna be in Friendswood. So that gets us three major intersections or nodes on the Parkway.
At least for me, I, I think that sounds like the way to go because it's a little bit of, of both, but everybody'll come to their own conclusions.
It's not inside our city limits. It's in Pearland. Yeah.
Yeah, I can see where this was a dilemma in going through this.
Which, and we don't have, it's just something to think about. We're gonna keep working on this map until July, August. We're gonna, you know, so we'll, it's gonna come back to you. We're gonna do some public outreach for the month of June um and see what kind of input we get and uh go from there.
I'm sure you were gonna get to it at some point, but since you brought it up, who else is left to talk to on this?
Um, so C E D C gave us their blessing. Uh, keep Friendswood beautiful. Um, Parks and Rec is actually in the process of updating their master plan. Uh, they're supposed to be getting me an update on that master plan. I haven't gotten it yet. Um, F I S D and C C I S D, I didn't reach out to them directly. F I S D, there was two representatives in the C E D C meeting. And we also, I reached out to them because they have, they're selling the Klein property. And then they've also acquired some additional properties next to the high school, the residential properties, and they have plans for, to expand the high school. So we have reflected their land use plan changes um on the plan. Um, Galveston County Consolidated, I have sent the information to them. Um, they're, I haven't heard back from them yet. And then our developers and real estate groups, we're just gonna bump to June and try to um month, the month of June, we're gonna do some brainstorming on how we're gonna do our public outreach. Um, but we'll get public comment for that month.
And this all gets developed into or put into the comprehensive plan that then goes before city council for discussion and review?
Yeah, so after June, we'll bring a final review of the uh plan back to the commission and then workshop it again with council in August. Um, we're presenting an update to them March or May third. Um, just to where we are right now. Um, and then hopefully do public hearing and planning zoning recommendation in September. And then council, public hearing and consideration and approval of ordinances. Um, this is just to approve this map itself. So it's our future, you know, land use plan. We need to get this updated because we use this as guides for our zone change uh decisions. But it al- also is a piece of the comp plan. So once we gets the, gets, get this updated, then I can go back to working on the chapters of the comp plan and keep updating um all of our other information. But this is a critical piece um to get updated. And I did want to, um, I gave a summary sheet. I don't think I put this in your backup material. I um was just still working on stuff kind of late this week and I apologize for that. Um, but just to, and this is for council's information too, um, just to remind you of the strategies that we kept in mind when we were making these decisions on the changes. So our, the fifty thousand population threshold is obviously a concern. Uh, the eighty-twenty commercial property, so that reference is to property taxes. It's not in reference to land use zoning. So they're not exactly the same. The Vision Twenty Twenty Plan actually identifies our land use to be seventy-three residential and twenty-three percent commercial. We're at eighty-four percent residential and sixteen percent uh eighty-four percent residential, sixteen percent commercial. So we're almost ten percent off in both of those categories.
I'm sorry, today or in our new map?
In the new map.
Right.
The new, yes. Um, but the good news is, um, the few, the Vision Twenty Twenty, if you go down like a couple of sections from there, it says that when that plan was written, our commercial um zoning categories needed to be flipped, basically. So it called, so at the time, re- retail was very little, office was more, and industrial was the biggest zoning category. And it basically needed to flip to where retail was the biggest category, office was next, and industrial was the least. Um, we are within acres of what we should be on the future land use map. So that was very good to see that um we are making, you know, we're meeting those requirements of the Vision Twenty Twenty in twenty twenty-one. But, and keep in mind too, this is not zoning on the ground. Um, this is the future land use map. But I think it does prove that this is a valid plan and we need to stick to it, um, you know, to help diversify our tax base. So, the zoning calculations, so like I said, we're at sixteen percent commercial. So seven hundred and thirteen of that is retail. Uh, office business park was two hundred and forty-eight acres, uh mixed use is a hundred and sixty-four, and industrial was five hundred and sixty-five. Which of that five sixty-five, three hundred and fifteen of it is the golf course.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, so that's, that's misleading too, because we know there's a potential to get other types of uses than just industrial. And we've talked about that in recent weeks too, so.
And with those calculations too, like classifying the property the way we did from the two thousand eight map, breaking down the regional detention, the public, the parks, the buyouts and the Brio site, we were able to take those off of the table as far as calculations because those properties are not gonna be developed. They're already accounted for. And, you know, the buyouts can never be sold. They're buyouts forever. Um, so it was useful to help, you know, to be able to take all those out of the calculations and come up with, you know, accurate numbers.
All right, anything else? That's good, excellent work.
I, I had just one question if we could. Uh, the, the property, uh, item number three that you had talked about, which was the area between Winding Way and Whispering Pines on fi- on five eighteen.
Uh-huh.
Um, last time you brought it, I, I was saying, why are we making that single family residential or or should we be? I know at one time there was talk about a, you know, potential convention center there or a hotel or or something because it's a large piece right near downtown. And, and but I see it's still being suggested that we make it single family residential. It was, what was the thinking behind that?
Uh, from what I recall, our discussions in subcommittee was that it's bordered by um residents or residential areas.
Uh-huh.
Uh, and pretty difficult. There's, so there's a lot of flood zone there as well. So um, we did talk about the potential for some creativity.
Right.
Uh, and then reminded us
To impede that creativity by saying, hey, this is another barrier we have to go over.
That's an important point.
Would be very desirable. The, the property owner mentioned a couple of years ago, I haven't talked to him in a while on this. He said, yeah, what I would love to see is a convention center here and not split the land up and do all these wonderful things that all sound like something good for Friendswood. And I just don't want to impede that.
Uh, yeah.
Again, this is future land use map.
No, I understand. It's not binding. It's just, it's, it's kind of, if you're at the fifty-fifty point, it might help push you someplace. It helps get you where you really want to be. And what we really want to be here, I think, is if, I, I don't want to impede that in any way, shape or form. I want to encourage it.
You're, you're right, because you know, a, a year down the road or five years down the road, we might look at this and say, well, someone thought at this point, or the other people sitting in these seats, not us, right?
Right.
Um, might be looking at this saying, well, hopefully that was uh a good decision they made to leave this um S F R. Um, so yeah, we can look at that. But this is one that was, I mean, the three of us with uh in subcommittee, um, Travis and Lisa and I debated this quite a bit.
Okay. Anyway, I just, I, I just wanted to make sure your thinking on that was, that's really the right thing. If you had the city the way you wanted it, you'd like put more houses here as opposed to
Yeah, sure.
Something else.
And Lisa and Travis, if you guys have other comments that I left out, please speak up.
We did kind of leave that open ended too, that with intentions of reaching out to that property owner and getting their current plans.
Yeah, yeah, that would be good. Yeah, if you talk to him, I think he's on F D E D C. If you happen to be going to them as well on, on this.
Or look at mixed use, something like that. So that's kind of, you know, a mix of different uses to uh to allow them to be creative.
Or encourage them that way, yeah.
Encourage them.
So we'll, we'll put that one back on the table as
Thanks.
Further discussion, sure.
Well, when we looked at it, it looked to be pretty difficult to develop in any way, shape or form.
They had some creative ideas of getting something up high and looking down on the creek and doing all sorts of special things. It sounded wonderful, but you know, it takes a whole lot of money and it, maybe it's not commercially viable, but that, that was what they were saying. And I, I, like I said, I just didn't want to impede that. I, I wanted to support them in any way I could.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments?
Uh, I saw Travis pop up there. I don't know if you had a comment or not.
I was gonna say awesome job on the uh future land use map uh by the whole subcommittee there. That was great work.
No, it's, it's Absolutely concur to that.
Hundred percent agree.
Hundred percent agree. Really nice shot. I try, I try to picket these things and it's very few picking I can find.
Right. Okay, well then our next uh item is consideration and possible action regarding future planning and zoning commission dates, Aubrey?
Our um next regular meeting is Thursday, uh, May thirteenth. And then our second meeting in May would be May twenty-seventh.
Okay, communications are next. Uh, we'll start with commissioner updates. Uh, any commissioners have anything that they wish to communicate? Suggestions for future agenda items, subcommittee updates, journal updates, or updates from liaison assignments? Make it so I don't forget. I will start with Commissioner Mann remotely.
No, sir. Thank you very much.
Okay. Commissioner Clark?
Uh, I've been out of town and haven't been involved in any of these matters for a couple of weeks, so I'll pass.
Okay. Commissioner Sassen?
Uh, the Galveston County Drainage District had a meeting on the thirteenth. Uh, they approved plat for Dude Stop and the drainage plan for, for that. I, I love the name. Um, it's over there on Brandywine, just north on five eighteen uh toward, toward the edge of Pearland there. There were two different entities asking for variances on uh the, the uh slope and the width of, of uh the barriers uh to the, to their drainage uh facilities. And they tabled both of them with the idea that they were not gonna approve those uh to go back and look at it. I think the developers were a little tight on land and looking for a way out, and that's not the reason for giving a variance. Uh, they also said a hundred and fourteen thousand loads have come from Imperial Estates as of the thirteenth. Uh, and now they estimate that to be eighty-five percent of the amount of soil they're going to remove. So they're getting in the home stretch. Uh, previously we've been talking about two-thirds being done. I think that was on money as opposed to on soil because after they get done, they're gonna have to spend effort to, to finish out, which won't result in moving dirt. But they're getting there. But I noticed today just driving around, they're still moving a lot of trucks out of there. So they're, they're, they're blowing and going. That's all I have.
Commissioner Lundquist?
So um my liaison is to keep Friendswood beautiful. And just before this meeting, I did get a uh a blast out from K F B that um they were awarded the governor's community something award?
G C A A.
G C A A and it's government's community, but i- it is an award. It's not a grant. It's not something that they um had to compete for. It was an award for work that they had done in the past.
Recognition.
Recognition award. So two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for them to spend to keep Friendswood beautiful in a way that, so I'm very excited. That whole group, um, they, they do a heck of a lot with very little. And I just can't imagine what they'll do with two hundred and fifty thousand. So congratulations to that group of volunteers and the uh, the city staff that supports them. I'm really proud of them. It's my favorite part of being on the commission.
But thank you, Lisa. Commissioner Perry?
No comments from me. Thank you.
Okay, I, I have nothing to add this evening as well. So next is our council liaison update. Uh, council member Graffon, thank you for coming tonight.
Yes, commissioners, staff, citizens, all. Um, yeah, I got Natasha's uh letter too. And it said that in quotes, "The G C A A program is one of the most prestigious annual environmental awards in Texas." And this is the second time that K F B has won it. They were awarded it in twenty fifteen and I think they did the work out here. And uh, they're getting another two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So that's really exciting. Um, our last council meeting, I think I forgot to mention this, but we started to dive into the budgeting process with city staff and Mo and Steven. So we're gonna be gearing up with that. And at the same time, y'all are gonna be sending us some land use maps. So we're really excited. And thank y'all so much, Marcus and Travis and everybody who worked on the, the land use maps. That's really, really good. Um, I got to go to the very first in-person meeting with the senior activity center over at Senior Activities. Uh, Sally Branson has taken over that job as liaison over there. And Mike Foreman showed up too, so all three of us were there. And so they're like, what are y'all all doing here? But it was really neat. They got uh things starting back up again. And I just wanted to mention the Cinco de Mayo is May the fifth, and they will be out at Stevenson Park. And we got a uh mariachi band that's going to be performing while everybody's eating lunch and everything. So that's really neat. Um, that'll be from uh, the mariachi band will be there from eleven thirty to twelve thirty, something like that around lunchtime. So if you can, I know Cinco de Mayo's all day long on the fifth. And so we're gonna be celebrating uh with the seniors on that day too. So if you can get out to Stevenson Park, that'll be great. Other than that, that's all I have unless you have some cre- questions for me.
Oh, good, that's great.
Thank you, sir. Thanks. Next are staff updates, Aubrey?
The League, the League City boundary adjustments are in process.
Mike?
Thank you. Uh, the League City boundary changes are in process. Um, League City has approved the changes with the first and final reading. And uh, part twenty-six acres of it was for Avalon for the additional lots around the pond. And like I said, it's a land donation. It is not a swap because we are not giving them anything, any land in exchange. Um, we are however, gonna pay them fifty percent of the property, the city's ad valorem tax for twenty years on the property because we didn't have anything to give them. Um, they obviously wanted something. And so we're gonna give them fifty percent of the city's tax for twenty years. Um, and then there's another small little point oh five acre piece, a triangle that's being exchanged um that um is part of the Friendswood Lakes Boulevard extension. Since that's gonna be our road and we're gonna maintain it, there was a little bitty triangle that um was overlapping the road. Um, so that's on council's agenda for second reading um on May third. So those boundary adjustments will be done.
Becky?
Um, subcommittee met and we worked on the tree ordinance a little bit. So those changes are still moving forward. Um, hopefully, maybe a month or two, we'll have something solid. But subdivision ordinance is still getting its overhaul and we will bring them whenever they're ready.
Thank you. Mary Kay, anything?
No news to share. Thank you.
Okay. With that, the April twenty-second, twenty twenty-one planning and zoning regular, regular meeting is now adjourned.